Good afternoon, everyone. It's Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. This is a school board briefing and the time is 2:30 PM. There are seven items on the agenda. Quarterly reports for school board advisory committees for the third quarter. Independent sales tax, sales surtax oversight committee. Construction change order report from March 2024. Job descriptions, code of conduct, public comment, good of the order and other business. Per board protocol, each member should strive for four minutes for initial comment and two minutes for follow-up with a total of 10 minutes during today's discussions. We are going to begin with our quarterly reports for the school board advisory committees for this third quarter. Today, do we have a representative from the construction advisory committee?
Oh, there she is.
You can go ahead and step up. Thank you.
Okay, this is going to be a very short report. We only had two meetings from last time. So, I will start reporting for the construction advisory committee. I'm the chair, Clarissa Parodi. We had a meeting in February 2024 and we reviewed the 10 years capital update. Mr. Ross, executive director of operations, and Mr. Malloy from planning conducted a thorough review of the committee's recommendations concerning the revised 10 years capital plan, which was initially presented to Lee County School Board in January. And the following recommendations were provided. Enhance school capacity and seating to reduce the cost per seat. Optimize building utilization by reducing the number of structures. Fostering a more compact and energy efficient design of school prototypes. Lower maintenance expenses. And investigate additional revenue avenues such as renewing the half of the penny tax post-2028 expiration dates. The next item that the committee reviewed were recommendations regarding the job order contracting program or JOG that was presented to the board also. And the committee revisited the presentation on the JOG program delivered by Gordian in a prior meeting. And upon review, it was determined that the project management component of the program might not be economically viable for the district because the fee charged by Gordian for providing management services for one average cost project equates to the salary of a project manager employed by the district in facilities who's capable of overseeing more than 10 projects annually. So additionally, the committee emphasized that this program could be problematic regarding competition of out-of-town firms, potentially impacting local construction companies that hire locally, pay taxes and contribute locally. So even when we don't have formal recommendations, there was strong opinion regarding this program. So in March 2024, we have the visit from planning, Joel DeGussman, planning coordinator. And he gave an update to the committee regarding the district plans to accommodate projected student growth in the district and all of the new schools proposed by the capital plan. So the discussion was about different aspects, about property acquisition, utilities, funding sources, emergency shelter requirements, student enrollment forecast. It was a very interesting meeting. So same thing, we don't have formal recommendations, but it was an eye-opener to see the growth that is projected and how the school district is working to accommodate that. And as a good of the order and given the extensive construction agenda for the next five years, committee members emphasize the importance of discussing the professional qualification selection process, or RFQ, requirements, guidelines, scoring criteria, et cetera. And that will happen in our next meeting in April where we invited procurement to give us some information regarding the procedure so everybody can understand it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Superintendent or board, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none.
That was easy.
Oh, okay, Ms. Patrica.
I think I'd like a little bit more detail regarding the recommendations. You don't have to do it right now. Who's my construction advisory? Maybe at a future briefing, you could break this down for me and let me know a little bit more what this means. That would be great. So to the two of you.
Well, if you have any question regarding any of the items, I can clarify it. No problem.
I'm thinking it's probably like a 10, 15-minute discussion that might be better at a briefing, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, do we have a representative from the curriculum advisory committee with
Good afternoon. I'm Bethany Quisenberry, the director for elementary curriculum and instruction. I'm a staff liaison for the committee. The committee met February 26th. In February, the committee held a hybrid meeting. Members received information about the process for the social studies adoption. They were able to ask clarifying questions and learn how to view the selected materials prior to the school board action meeting, which was on March 26th. In addition, members reviewed the media access form. Members discussed the wording of the options. Ms. Patrica encouraged members to review the July 26th board workshop and July 31st board briefing meeting to learn more about the wording of the options. Members received links from the committee secretary to view prior to revisiting the form at the March meeting. Members also inquired about the number of media specialists serving our schools and the data was shared with members as requested. Mrs. Patrica also highlighted the new sport of flag football for high school girls and talked about the importance that sports plays in engaging students in school. Three members signed up to participate in upcoming ad hoc committees for book challenges. At the March 25th meeting, the committee held a hybrid meeting. Members continued the selected topic of learning loss. Administrators from school counseling and mental health services shared information about new required legislation regarding resiliency. They highlighted the initiative and shared examples of how the district is providing instruction to support students and teachers while meeting legislative requirements. The committee also revisited the media access form. There was a motion to make a recommendation to remove the form, but it did not pass. Another motion was made to suggest edits to the form, but due to time constraints, the motion was tabled until the April meeting, which will be April 29th. There were about 60 to 70 members of the community present and 12 elected to share public comments on the media access form.
Thank you. Superintendent or board members, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a representative from the district advisory council today?
Good afternoon, board. Apologies for my appearance. I rode my motorcycle today because the weather was just awesome. So you work from home and you're working the computer all the time. You've got to take every break you can get. So three meetings so far this quarter. Really just happy to report that we have outstanding participation in the district advisory council. Lots of people want to have their voices shared and you see, and it's not segregated to one area or one grade level. It seems elementary, middle and high. We have good representation from parents, both actual SAC members from their schools and members of the public as well that join in. I believe that having the online meetings are really the key to success on that one where you don't have to worry about people coming meeting down here and fighting traffic on their motorcycle, just as a random example. On January 31st, we had our first DAC meeting. I understand you all will be briefed later today on the code of conduct. And I thought it was a wonderful briefing. It was well-received. Mr. Ron Rusi, excuse me if I think I mispronounced that twice, talked about the changes. In general, people were fond of what they were presented. The idea of having QR codes and better access was important, and I think they're going to be talking to you about that later this afternoon. But one thing that stuck out was the inclusion of AI with cheating. And so again, I think that's something that's on the agenda for this afternoon, but something that we discussed in the DAC was it was overly broad in its language. And so if we were to say that, you know, we have a couple of words really on cheating in the code of conduct, and if you just broadly say all use of AI is cheating, you know, it's akin to when spell check came out saying anytime you see a red squiggly line, you're cheating. Or, you know, anything to that effect, using calculators is cheating. You know, I think we need to be very specific and cautious when we decide to dictate how students use this tool. It is undoubtedly the future. So much so, I work for a private equity-held company. Right now, we have a mandate. In the next six months, we have to tell our owners how we're incorporating AI into our company. And it's happening all throughout the business world. Our students need to learn AI and we should do nothing to inhibit their growth in that area. Responsible use, absolutely, we need to talk about that. I think that's what they'll address later. But we had a lot of discussion on that and it's really important that we make sure that we don't stifle growth in this rapidly expanding area. Moving on to February 28th, we had a great briefing from human resources on staff retention. Generally, the DAC members, we have a good representation of teachers or former teachers on the DAC, and so they definitely provided their input on, you know, the challenges facing our district's retention, ideas to help recruiting, nothing maybe that you haven't heard all before, challenges with compensation, the cost of living here in Lee County, of course, being an issue, transportation in Lee County, you know, and the challenges of being in the district. Maybe you live south in Benita Springs and then you get a job up where I live at Mariner High School. You know, you're staring down an hour-long commute. And that's not really unique to Lee County except for the fact that it's a county-wide school district. And so that's, you know, if we're trying to hire teachers from outside the state, it's just one more barrier into an area that's already struggling for recruitment. And then on the retention side, you know, one comment was made that it seemed as though the retention numbers were aligned with the national average. So, you know, while we want to keep everyone as much as possible, of course, and we don't want anyone leaving for reasons that are avoidable, you know, hostile work environment, appropriate management, not feeling like you have a voice, all the normal things. In general, it seemed as though our overall retention numbers were in line with the national average. And so maybe the focus needs to pivot slightly toward deliberate turnover. And so how do we manage people that we want managed out? And then more importantly, what are we doing on the recruiting side to make sure that there's always a constant flow of new recruits in a pipeline, if you will, to manage that? And that was offered to the committee. No public comments were received, a couple of comments for the good of the order. And then finally, on March 27th, we had an amazing briefing on student enrollment. Ms. Ralph talked to us about the KELIS system and efforts to improve student enrollment. A lot of time and energy was focused on how do we reduce the line outside the district building as much as possible. Various ideas were submitted. I don't know if you all have them all, it was on our jam boards, but the things that stuck out was, you know, similar to how at Publix you have the kiosk for your vehicle registration. Maybe that could be an option explored for district registration. People move to the area, they have to register their vehicles. That may be a way, a good place for outreach. And another comment was reducing, if not eliminating, the need to come to the district office altogether. Initially, the question was why does anyone need to be seen in person? It's 2024. I moved to the district a couple of years ago and did it all online and the team was amazing. And we're really glad to be here. But it quickly became apparent that due to a myriad of factors, an exclusively online application process is impractical for good and bad reasons. But maybe what we need to do is decentralize it to where we empower school counselors. There's a, hey, you live here, more likely than not, you're going to go to this school, talk to this school counselor and set it up that way. And so you have a distributed enrollment process, just like so many things, armchair quarterbacking, of course. It's a complex thing and the committee was gracious with our input. And that wraps up the three meetings that we've had. We've got one more yet this month. It's my pleasure to serve and answer any of y'all's questions. Thank you so much.
Superintendent or board members, any comments? Dr. Savage?
Well, I wanted to defer to the board members first, but I just have to really thank you for highlighting a couple of issues. One in particular, just want to start with the first one, you mentioned the AI. Certainly, I think it is vital. We in education, we're in a futurist profession in that we're essentially building for the future, which is evolving in front of us. So it's, that in and of itself is a very difficult thing to do because you're trying to build a foundation for the time you can't quite predict exactly. But it is very clear that artificial intelligence is an extraordinary part of the future and how we kind of embrace and understand our role in helping to prepare students for that world that they're walking into and our current staff and leveraging all that. That is a huge body of work. So looking forward to potentially more conversation on that, but just thank you again, always DAC, for really getting into difficult issues and providing such unique feedback. The other thing I just have to say, because it's always been a huge issue for me, is that line out of the door. Anytime we're in the student assignment, and I know we've made really good steps to try to address with the KELIS system, a lot of other things, having data on that, but it is a huge, huge issue for us that we want to continue. And one thing we have looked at in the past was decentralization because we do have information specialists, guidance counselors, folks who can enroll and receive records and things like that. But moving, those are massive shifts. As you know, they're just, that's phenomenal work. But thank you for really being engaged in important issues and just can't thank you enough for your service.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a representative from the equity and diversity advisory committee with us
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, to our superintendent, Dr. Savage, and also our attorney, and our board members. I am not Dr. Christopher Blakely and I am not Dr. Paula Porter. However, I am Jared Eadie and I serve as a staff liaison for our district's advisory committee. The committee has had two meetings since the last time they appeared before you. The committee met on February 12th of 2024 and received a presentation about the student code of conduct as well as the district's non-discrimination policy. That briefing and informational overview was provided by Mr. Chuck Bradley as well as the student code of conduct by Dr. Ron Rusi. The committee deliberated and had much discussion about the code of conduct and they will offer official recommendations through their board liaison, your colleague, Ms. Debbie Jordan. In addition to that conversation, your attorney, Ms. Kathy Bruno, presented the coordinator for civil rights and equity compliance, Ms. Jennifer Fuller, who introduced herself to the committee and discussed the process for investigation relative to Title VI, Title VII and Title IX. For the month of March, the committee met and received a presentation from the newly minted executive director of human resources, Mrs. Suzette Rivera, who provided an update about recruitment and retention strategies. Additionally, through a formal motion brought to you by your board liaison, Ms. Debbie Jordan, the committee did meet and gave a recommendation relative to specific district departments across district and district policies. The committee met for the month of April and on April 8th, they offered a very hefty list of recommendations to close out this year. Those will be provided to you in a forthcoming communication to wrap up our advisory committee year. And that is the report submitted on behalf of Dr. Christopher Blakely, who sends his regards, as well as Vice Chair Dr. Paula Porter. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from our board or superintendent? Ms. Jordan?
I just want to thank Mr. Eadie for all that he does with this committee. And then I had sent you all the recommendations at the last meeting, so you already have what Mr. Eadie is speaking on. I just wanted to make sure you remember that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. You too.
Do we have a representative from the finance advisory committee?
Hi, Barry Ryan, Chair of the Finance Advisory Committee. For February, during our public comment, Alva community members raised concerns about the proposed school location and its overall cost. Kelly Letcher, budget director, gave a presentation on the legislative update. The committee requested a representative from the HR department to present information regarding salaries, exit rates and exit interviews. For March, during the meeting, we did not have enough members present to establish a quorum. However, we were joined by Angela Montemorano, Chief Human Resource Officer, who was present to answer some questions from the committee members. She informed us that the Evergreen Compensation Survey is still pending, which will help us understand how competitive our teacher salaries are compared to other counties. Furthermore, the Human Resource Department is currently undergoing a transformation and a new position will be created to include a national recruiter. The committee requested to review the exit interview form and discuss initial data from the Evergreen Compensation Survey in our next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, board members or Superintendent, Ms. Morgan?
Thank you for your report, but I do want to say that finance advisory has not had a quorum the last two meetings. The lack of attendance concerns me and I think I'm going to bring up in my comments that we need to consider a way to have, get feedback from committee members about their participation on these committees and the use of their time. So that would be my, because, you know, staff takes time to come and present and when you don't even have enough people to really have a good conversation about the material presented, it's really a shame. So I think we need to do a little bit more work on our end about committee work. I will also say, referencing the comment about Alva being at the meeting, one of the things Alva said was that why don't you have a facilities meeting, a facilities committee? Because you have a finance committee that looks at your budget and you have a construction committee that looks at work underway. But you don't have any way for the public to engage with the board in an ad hoc way on growth and what growth means in terms of areas of the county, new schools, additions to schools, that sort of thing. So I'm going to bring that up again in my board member comments and maybe make some suggestions. So those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely.
Ms. Patrica?
If I may, through the chair, ask whoever knows, does finance advisory have a hybrid option available?
Both in person and online.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Great, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Do we have a representative from the Strategic Planning and Accountability Advisory Committee with us today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Bill Ribble, the vice chair of our committee. And I want to thank Dr. Savage for his leadership this year and for his in-depth report that's in your binder. And I'm going to just take a few seconds to recap it because I know you already probably previewed it. I'm happy to say we have a great committee in place this year. We had 15 members of our committee. We had a quorum each and every time. The last time we met, we started talking about recommendations in March and it was so passionate that we rolled it in and decided to have another meeting on April 11th. So as liaison chair, Mr. Fisher can attest, there was a lot of passion in the room, but believe it or not, we agreed on our recommendations I'm going to share with you in a second. Two areas of strategic plan that we addressed this year was objective five, and you heard about this in three other reports, it comes under code of conduct, promote a safe learning and working environment. A lot of passion and discussion on that, objective five. Number six, to increase employee recruitment and retention, and of course, addressing the turnover. As I mentioned, the last meeting we had, we all agreed to support the strategic plan by improving both the quality and transparency of data systems. And it's really the first time we got into reporting of data and in-depth reporting. And we had a lot of folks in our committee this year that were real passionate about it. They have a lot of training in the workplace and some folks from FGCU, some professors, including our chair, Dr. Stork, as many of you folks have probably met over the last couple of years, as our board chair. So we had two recommendations. I'll just boil them down briefly. The first one being recommend to the board that finance should be included in the direct budget funding to establish integrated information analysis and capability. So we need some funding for that. And the second recommendation is for the board to direct staff to develop a program with specific objectives and timeliness to collect, collate and report information to the public on the district's website. And that should not be limited to, but including capital plan projects, student behavior, student-teacher ratio metrics and the district finance reporting included. That's all we have. Do we have any questions on the report?
Board members, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you to Mr. Ribble, Dr. Stork and the rest of the committee. This was a very fascinating committee to be on. They really dove deep into some of the things we need to be looking at with data. So I'd also like to thank Dr. Savage being the liaison this year. We really, really got some good feedback and some of it we've incorporated through the briefings. And I'm kind of looking forward to some of what the future, and I can go through their own board comment about the recommendations, maybe with Dr. Savage a little bit more. But they really brought some things to him and there's very diverse people from just either in business industry, teachers, FGCU. So there was a lot of opinions in there that really, really, as I said, I really enjoyed it and actually mirrored a lot of our discussions with when we were working on the strategic plan refresh. So I just wanted to say kudos to all of them. Thank you.
Any other board member comments, questions? Superintendent? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee report. Steve Shimp, committee chair, and Susan Millay, committee liaison.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Shimp. I'm chairman of the Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee and I'm glad that there's an acronym for it. We refer to it as the ISOC. That makes it a lot simpler. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you today and I'll walk you through that and then encourage you to ask questions about our activities. And basically what we're going to do is walk you very briefly through an overview, and some of you have heard this before, of the composition and function of our committee. Share with you the results to date of the sales tax that have come in. Most of that are numerical, but it'll give you an idea of how much of an impact in an overview basis it's made on the committee. We'll talk about compliance and with the referendum and the results of our committee's efforts. The district communication, district-level communications to the public that have happened with regard to the sales tax. Communication that is really a bit new targeted at schools in a very specific way as to the impact of the sales tax. And then some efforts on behalf of committee members to get out in the community and try to express to the community what's been going on. And after that, I'll be glad to open it up for questions and hopefully I can provide you answers. And if not, I'm going to refer to Susan Millay, who surely will know. The Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee was formed as a result of the passage of the referendum about five or six years ago, which levies a sales tax in Lee County for four purposes. Our committee members are pretty broad in terms of their expertise. Some of us have construction backgrounds, we have some accounting backgrounds, we have people in real estate, we have people that have served in government, and we have past employees of the district that are really quite valuable because they have an insight as to how the district functions. Our committee is Our committee is comprised of 15 members and two alternates. Our alternates do not have voting rights unless they become one of the 15 members. Each of you selects a couple of members for our Board, and you're familiar with that. We have staggered terms ranging from two to four years. Those two-year terms are now a thing of the past, as long as one wants to continue. They were a function of when we got started, of our initial group. Some of us served a two-year term, and then could be rechosen or agree to serve for another four. We all have to be residents of Lee County, and we do have to serve with no compensation, and that's fine with all of us. None of us have asked for any pay. I really thought that was kind of comical in a number of years. I've been there, and we decide that if we did that, you'd probably tell us that we weren't worth more than a dollar, and we don't want to hear that. There are four authorized spending categories that the ISOC deals with, and they are the key to the functions that we perform. The money is intended to be spent in accordance with what was passed by the voters on construction, on safety, on maintenance, capital maintenance, and on technology. And our function as a committee, reporting to the public, is to ensure the public as best we can that, in fact, those four areas are where the funds are being spent. It goes without saying that an exclusion area is for operations. We are not allowed to expend sales tax money for things like salaries in the district, that sort of thing. Switching to the results so far, we have -- the district has received $507 million so far as a result of the sales tax, a considerable sum. We've only expended $352 million of that, but that is somewhat of a deceiving number in that the commitments that have been made on construction projects get funded over a period of time. So a higher -- a considerably higher amount of that number has been committed to projects, so that the 352 can be easily misinterpreted if you don't understand that capital projects are expended over a period of time. We've seated 4,767 students in new seats in the district, new schools. We have eight new schools that have been built with sales tax money. We have seven schools that have undergone substantial renovation and major renovations that are in progress. We have safety systems in place in all schools. You all must be familiar now with the walkthrough standards that we walk through, the weapons detection system. That's in addition to numerous things that have to do with the flow of people in and out of our physical facilities, traffic patterns, security in terms of cameras, and various steps that can be taken in the event of an emergency, as well as communication with first responders at both the school and the district level. We've placed 22,000 Chromebooks in elementary schools and 73,000 Chromebooks for this, what we call the Student Refresh Program. Every student in Lee County has access to a school, to a Chromebook, and I think, and I -- tell me if I'm wrong, Susan, we are in the top 1% of the country in terms of the number of students that have access to using a Chromebook. That's an exceptional pool in the day. And Ken, when you talk about AI coming in, you know, that's in preparation for those students as well. 100% of our schools have received improvements as a result of the surtax. In terms of our report and our findings as a committee, I would encourage you to read the minutes when they come out from our meetings. There are questions asked by our committee members. Does this necessarily fall within the tax portion, you know, what was intended? There are questions that are asked about specific projects and answered, so it's not that we put your staff through a grilling, but I'm sure that they understand that there may very well be questions from their reports. As a result of those inquiries and the quality of the reports that we have from staff, in each meeting, we've been able to pass a motion that, in fact, we approve the financial report that's been placed in front of us, and we approve the projects report that is offered to us to ensure that the projects that are funded are within the district's Next, I'll go to communication. Your website is not new communication. The district website with regard to the sales tax has been in place for about five years now. You should go to it regularly, as you and all are familiar, I'm sure. There are multiple tabs that you can click on and take a look at what's happening, and individual school can be looked at. That's important to the public, that they can look at their school. Your media department works heavily in press releases on our projects funded by the ISOC or by the sales tax, and social media has been used regularly. Somewhat new has been, in the past year, the district has gone to reporting at the school level those specific projects that have been funded with sales tax. And on this side, on the right-hand side, you'll see, that's an insert in an athletic bulletin that explains that on that particular campus, the Lee High Senior High School, $9,503,892 has been spent on improvements that have been funded by the sales tax. That is generally an effort to thank the public for passing the referendum. And last, and maybe least of all the communications, our committee felt that as citizen members, that we ought to step outside as individual citizens, not internal to the district, and speak to what's happening as a result of the sales tax. We prepared a PowerPoint presentation that overviews it, gives some specific results. Fair amount of work went from your staff, and that's because we're probably a little more demanding in terms of, would you modify this, would you modify that? And when we got it to the point where our committee approved it to take it to the public, we have presented that to a number of locations. I think we started at the foundation of Lee County Public Schools, but we've hit the Rotary Clubs of the Cape, Astero, Fort Myers, North Fort Myers. We have presented to the National Pan-Elevenet Council. We've been to the Horizon Council, the Astero Chamber Leadership Class as well. It's really been very interesting to be the presenter in those. We reached some -- we do encounter some people who would be against the tax in any event, no matter what it was for, and they speak up, and that's all well and good. But generally speaking, I can report to you that the public reception of those presentations has been positive. And I think it's positive because there are private enterprise people making those presentations. They're product collectively of the district and our committee. But for me, as a taxpayer, I'd like to hear another taxpayer say that can't possibly get some benefit out of it. You know, gee, this is going pretty well, and you ought to be happy about it. I put some stock in that, and a number of our audiences have done that. We have more presentations scheduled. We'll be at Rotary South on April 29th, and then we're working on setting up the Hispanic Chamber and various Kiwanis Clubs. If you, as a board member, have not attended one of those presentations, I would encourage you, as those dates are set, you know, come join us. We'll low-key you or introduce you right up front, whatever your fancy is. We can let you hide in the back of the room or sit at the front table. But those presentations, for you to hear them and see the public reaction, may be of interest to you. With that, I'd be glad to field questions.
Board members or superintendent, do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Persons.
I was just wondering, because I can't remember, I'm getting old, what percent of the sales tax is from nonresidents or tourists or whatever?
It's in our presentation. I'd have to refer to it, but I think that's a 20% number, if I'm remembering correctly.
Right. Thank you.
It's significant.
Right.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to compliment Mr. Schimpf. He has been the Chair for the last three years at least, and he has -- he's the one who's really pushed the committee to put together this presentation that goes out to the community, peers speaking to peers in the community about what the sales tax is doing. And that's really important, because you all know, those of you who will be on the Board after this year, that there has to be a conversation about what happens going forward. And the extent to which the community is familiar with what has taken place thus far will be, I think, critical in terms of our ability to go out and have that conversation again, if that is what this Board chooses. So I want to thank you for your work, and I want to thank you for pushing the committee, and I want to thank Ms. Millay and her group, because I know that you two worked together to put these presentations on, and that they're great.
I have to correct you in something. It's only been two years that I've been Chairman. I would tell you that when I rolled out the idea, there was no question, no hesitancy on the part of the committee to do it. This was embraced. And your staff has really given us good support. You know, the quality of the presentation we give, they update numbers every time to make sure we're current. And you've got some pretty good folks in your presentation and media department that have assisted us. There's always a technical person there in case our laptop blows up to help us or we can't click our clicker, and you know, that's kind of neat, too. They've done a great job supporting the speakers. That makes our job easier, so.
Thank you. Ms. Petrika.
Yeah, I think I say it every time you come in front of us, it's you and others on the committee bring automatic credibility to the position. I'm very grateful, not just for your service on ISOC, but taking it a step further and going out into the community. I know that there are people out there who are no tax no matter what. I was one of them until the facts of the half penny sales tax were placed in front of me. But if I continued to be one of them, I would have a hard time arguing with you and with others on the committee because of your track record of success in business and the fact that you're considered a leader in this community. So the fact that you're willing to go out and talk about this, and it can be difficult, I know I did a lot of it before it was passed, it can be difficult. You can be met with some pretty angry pushback. I'm very, very grateful that you're willing to do this for our kids and for our staff. So thank you.
It's been interesting, as those people have spoken up that they really didn't, you know, they saw it as an unnecessary tax. There were another three or four in the room who said, you know, based to them, basically at the Rotary Club, although they all joke anyway, you know, nah, you're missing the point. And those conversations have been -- have been -- there's very few people that it's not really been well-received. As for you, Chris, if you take a position against it next time around, we'll still forgive you, you know, but we'll tell you you're wrong. That's all.
Dr. Savage.
Yes, I just want to thank you so much for your service, really on behalf of the rest of the committee. I think I just want to highlight a couple of things. One, the independent nature of it. It's very important that folks understand that this is independent, that this is not district advocacy. Our role as a district administration side is really just to provide facts. That is all we can do, and that is all we should do, that it is, this is not our sales tax. This is the community. This is the voters. The voters are the ones who put this, and so our obligation is to provide information to the voters on what the impact of this is in the organization, so that they can make the informed decision. And that's essentially why we contribute and help in that way, strictly to provide information that we are expected and obligated to do. And so I just really want to thank you for always kind of walking that fine line of presenting, keeping all of us as a governance team informed for your advocacy, that you constantly want to get more information for folks to be able to know, just so it's informed. But just thank you so much for everything you've done.
You're welcome. It doesn't take that much time, Ken. I'm an old retired guy. I've got time to do some of this stuff.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Just real quick, again, I want to thank you as well. And I do believe that when people do see this, it makes sense, because they're actually seeing the fruits of labor. They're seeing what's taking place with their money. And then also, I wanted to thank you, because you had made mention about the questions that are asked. On the minutes, it does show that there are questions, and it's even written down what the questions are. So it's not that you're having these meetings and people are not asking the questions. Those questions are being asked and answered. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Petrika.
This is not for you, Mr. Schimpf, if I may, to the superintendent, through the chair. It's been a while since we've had any kind of data presented to us regarding Chromebooks. That used to be a pretty regular occurrence when I first got on the Board, and I know some members of the public have pushed back and said, well, why are we replacing them as frequently as we are? And I know that there are answers, but they're not at the tip of my tongue, because it's been so long since it was presented to us. So I don't know what the Board's pleasure is, but if we could just have a brief presentation on technology, where we stand, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, Ms. Petrika.
I would add, with regard to the Chromebooks, that's been a, you know, that's been a bit of a big part. It's not a huge expense in terms of building a whole building, but a lot of the public doesn't even know what a Chromebook is. And, you know, that would be worth communicating more clearly how much out in front we are as a district. That would be worth doing, because it's significant, and it's a gold star. You can hang up.
Thank you. Yeah, when I sat in and listened to the last meeting, that was a big topic, quite frankly. But thank you so much for serving our community in this capacity.
You're welcome.
Next up is the Construction Change Order Report from March 2024. Scott Rickenbacher is, well, we're going to welcome him to the podium. Thank you.
This is your March 2024 Change Order Report as required by statute. As you will notice, we had zero direct material purchases to report this month. We had $17,904.88 in non-direct material purchase change orders and contingency adjustments in the amount of $29,363.12. The supporting information on page two breaks out what campuses and what projects these change orders were assigned to. So we've had two, zero, as I mentioned, zero direct material purchase change orders. We had two change orders for Gulf Point Construction at the Pre-K Edition at G Weaver Hips and at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. We also had contingency adjustments, one for Gulf Point, one for Tobler Joint Venture OAK at the Pre-K Edition at G Weaver, and also at Franklin Parks Rebuild. Are there any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions? Superintendent? Okay. Thank you.
Good day.
Yes, you as well. Next on this afternoon's agenda is job descriptions with Angela Montemorano.
Today, we have two new job descriptions that were up for your review, as well as one job description with a revision they were provided to you to review. And at this time, I'd ask if there was any comments or discussion.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or discussion questions? Dr. Savage?
I have not.
Wow. That was easy.
That's always easy, right? More. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is the Code of Conduct. This will be presented by Dr. Jessica Duncan, Rachel Gould, and Dr. Rana Rusi, and Tammy Scott, excuse me. Welcome. Thank you.
I'm Rachel Gould. I'm one of the Directors of Constituent Services and Student Discipline. I'm here with my colleagues Tammy Scott and Dr. Rana Rusi, and we are here to talk to you about the Student Code of Conduct. Go to the next slide. Our agenda today, we will review the updates we made to the 2324 Code, the legislative additions, and the code engagement that we had. additions, and the code engagement that we had. We will also talk about the feedback groups we spoke to for the 2425 code, the proposed changes, and the timeline moving forward.
All right. So our updates from last year to this year, as you are aware, we were able to reduce the size of the code from a little over 100 pages down to 56. And we combined the elementary code and the secondary code into one book. So now we are responsible for publishing an English version, a Spanish version, and a Haitian Creole version. That's three books rather than doubling that amount. Last year, we also aligned our codes to be more in alignment with the state in our Cessar coding. So level one to five are aligned with one being the most severe. We included QR codes on the information that we removed from previous codes, and that has been well received. And then we focused on threat towards a teacher was moved to a level two offense rather than a level three offense. We also added a landing page on our district website that is more of an online type of book rather than parents accessing the book and then they'd have to flip through the pages in a PDF format. So it was much more user friendly at that point. So one addition that we will be doing is on our landing page for the code of conduct, there is a phrase that says additional language setting options in the menu bar. But if you do not read English, you wouldn't really know that that is saying that. So our request is to add that sentence in Spanish and in Haitian Creole as well. So we're really looking for additional ways throughout our process for accessibility for our families. This legislative update has been made to our current code for both the student code and the adult code of conduct. This is the only change made to the adult code. You will see that change when we submit the red line copy to you May 5th or May, sorry, May 7th.
Excuse me, Ms. Gould, is your microphone on? I just want to.
Sorry. Shut off. So this legislative update has been made to the current code and for both the student code and the adult code. It is the only change that you will see in the adult code and you will be presented that with the red line copy May 7th. And this change is stating that if a student chooses to use a restroom designated for the opposite sex and the sex based at, at birth and refuses to leave, then that student can face a level three consequence. So we wanted to provide you with some metrics in regards to accessibility. Who's accessing the code of conduct, how, and so forth. So on our district website, this was about a month ago when I received this, the form of data. So 9,502 clicks on the code of conduct itself, but it was identified that just over 5,000 individual users have done that. So that's gone through the IP address and those metrics behind the scenes. And then when we take a look at our acknowledgements, so at the beginning of the year, our parents are asked to get on their focus accounts and acknowledge the code of conduct. Currently, when we submitted this data, it was 70.37%, but currently we're at 74% for parents and at 70% for students. And oftentimes we're asked why 74% and why is it not 100%? Because this is a forced option for parents. It's not, they can't skip out of that process. This is the first year that we've done that. Last year, it was included in the directory information. And this year, the board had asked us to move it where it was a forced option for them. So there are a couple of reasons why it would be 74% for parents. And we don't have 100% of our students with a parent connected or linked account for the focus portal. So not 100%. And then sometimes our parents will have a linked account, but they never go on the linked account. So they may instead ask their child to open their Chromebook and go on your focus account and show me what your grades are. So oftentimes our parents will do that. So there's two reasons why our percentage is at 74%. For students, our current percent is 70%. We have a very high rate at the high school level, but a much lower rate at the elementary level. So thinking about a kindergartener going on their focus account, that my daughter-in-law's a kindergarten teacher, that is definitely not something that she is doing with her kindergarten students. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background as to why the percentages are the way they are. And then last is you had asked last year for us to have some kind of data that indicates how many parents and students access the code of conduct through the focus portal. So 2,647 parents and then almost doubled that amount for our students.
Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Savage, Attorney Corey Bruno, and other district staff members. As you heard from some of the groups that presented tonight, the, the discipline team has been out and about, if you will, speaking to as many stakeholder groups as possible to provide a lot of information about where the code has come from, what feedback we've gotten from other groups, and maybe some recommendations that we've received from all of our stakeholder groups. So this slide just kind of highlights what we've been able to do. And again, credit the district for allowing a, a discipline team made up of three members to go out and do this type of work is really essential to the success of our code of conduct. So some of the groups that we've, we've met with over the past years, we, we, the three of us are, we have been divided by, I, I work with high school, Tammy works with middle school and Rachel, I'm sorry, Tammy works with elementary and Rachel works with middle school. So we've been out, we've been able to go out and meet administrators one-on-one just to have conversations with them about what they see in the code of conduct. They do also have representative groups that we meet with on a regular basis. And then we've also had virtual meetings as of late to get feedback on some of what they've seen so far, as far as some of those recommendations. We've had different community group meetings. We had two so far. I think these, this community group were recommendations of, of board members, of people to serve on that group. Met with them in February and March. We consistently meet with deans to get their, their feedback as many of our deans in our buildings are the boots-on-the-ground people that are really dealing with the code of conduct on a daily basis. We heard from DAC on January 31st, the conversations that were in the feedback that we had from them. Equity and diversity also, Mr. Bradley and I met with them twice to talk about the code of conduct and get feedback from that group. Many of you we've seen at Parent University, I think we had five or six of those across the different sites throughout the district and got some great feedback from them during those meetings. We use QR codes so that people could give us feedback by logging on to the system and, and giving us that feedback. We, probably one of the most fun groups, not that they're all not fun, but the fun groups that we got to meet with was student advisory. And then there again, some boots-on-the-ground folks that are directly affected by the code of conduct, and they gave us some great suggestions at the student advisory committee. Strategic planning and accountability, met with them on two occasions. Student Services had community conversations, not just about the code of conduct, but out and about within the community, within each zone to talk about what services are provided through the student services department. And of course, the code of conduct is, is a part of that. Superintendent's cabinet, we've met with on a regular basis to, to keep them updated and informed on some of the feedback that we're getting. We also were able this year to meet with teachers. And so at each level, high school, middle school, and elementary, we were able to have each building send representatives of teachers to those meetings. And so again, three different zones, three different grade levels, great conversations with our teachers and got some really good feedback about the code of conduct and how that works for them as well.
So after we met with all of those stakeholders, we would like to now present you with some, some proposed changes to the code of conduct for the upcoming school year. One of the changes is with peer conflict. We have some concerns that were raised by the groups who spoke about students engaging in conflicts in secluded areas like bathrooms. Because the state changed how a fight was defined last year, schools have had to rely on peer conflict more this year. And the change we are proposing allows administrators to recommend Success Academy with a SARC review. And a SARC is a Success Academy Review Committee. And that would give a team of district and school-based administrators an opportunity to review the specifics of an incident to ensure that the most appropriate consequence is given for that student or the, the incident that happened. We are also proposing to add a low, a new local code, which would be physical harm. We want to add this local code mostly, we heard a lot from a lot of elementary school administrators. And this would be a code that would address behaviors that are more serious than horseplay, but less egregious than simple battery. Also a concern that came up, unfortunately, we saw an uptick in students using racial slurs towards other students. And so again, at the secondary level, we want to give principals the opportunity to recommend Success Academy with the SARC review. Simple battery with the new local code of physical harm, we have adjusted the level for simple battery. And we are proposing to remove major and minor and just changing it to first and repeated to a level two. We have made this change with the understanding that principals will follow the, the definition of the code. We also, in this threat intimidation, with this code, we are aligning it to the state definition and removing the word felt. So now it will read the victim reasonably believed that physical harm could have occurred. Unauthorized area, we reviewed that in slide five. The student must use their designated restroom. And again, this is the only change to the adult code. And then electronic, use of electronic device. So as technology changes, our definitions, definitions need to keep up. So we have included that electronic devices are not limited to cell phones, but we also including watches, earbuds, those kinds of ancillary, ancillary devices. We also have included state prohibited websites in the code. And the other suggestion that we are offering is to change the title from use of electronic devices to simply electronic devices to make it clearer and easier to find in the code of conduct.
Here we go. Go back one, one slide and talk about some more proposed changes. As you can see, and we talked about earlier, the change on the district website landing page to make sure that, you know, directions is, is where to go to, to get the code in Spanish and Creole will also be listed on the landing pages in those two languages. We are proposing a little bit of a change in our search and seizure language. And basically it's more of a housekeeping item. I believe the, our policy, the code said, use the term personnel, and our policy uses the term authorities. So more or less a housekeeping change there. The range of corrective strategies based on feedback that we got from principals that because our code of conduct refers to some of those corrective strategies currently as plans, and many of our, our administrators and deans talk about the level of response to meet the level of the behavior because we refer to the behaviors in levels. And again, as, as you mentioned, as the representative from DAC mentioned, lots of conversations around cheating specifically with the use of AI. Currently, we do have cheating in our code of conduct, but we do want to propose that the misuse of AI would fall under cheating within our code of conduct. And within that proposal, there is a statement that says, you know, the district does understand that AI is, is part of the future and that we don't discourage students, but we want to make sure that they use it in the right, right way. Drug use in possession, I'm going to go through that in the next couple of slides, but we're looking at a, a revision of school-level responses. Again, this is based on feedback from teachers, administrators, student groups, all of them talking about the use of tobacco and drug use and, and how we handle those incidents. Insubordination and disrespect, a few months ago, we presented to the board some data on, you know, what some of our top code of conduct violations are. And insubordination disrespect is among the top when it comes to local codes. So the conversations we've been having with our feedback groups is, you know, how do we really define what insubordination and disrespect is so that we can provide clarity to both teachers, students, administrators on what the expectation is around insubordination and disrespect? And so we make an attempt within the code to further clarify that and provide clarity for all of the stakeholders involved. And lastly, the off-campus felony is basically, again, more or less a housekeeping item to make sure that in the code of conduct, we understand that official state's attorney's office must have charges filed in order for that, and that's a Cessar code. So that's another housekeeping item when it comes to off-campus felony. So these are some, the next couple of slides are some proposed changes, again, when we're dealing with tobacco and, and drug use. You know, the main vehicles, I guess, that are used by students are vaping devices. And so we have definitely seen an increase in the use of vaping in both drug use and tobacco use. We've seen a, a larger increase at the high school level, but we're also seeing it now down into the middle school level as well. And so again, based on feedback groups, you know, we did have some, we have, we have prevention for some of our students for first-time use. And then we do have some other levels of offenses for second and repeated offenses for students. So, you know, we, we've heard from a lot of feedback groups that we'd like to see some consistency from building to building too on how we're handling these. So this is, would be, you know, really a proposed change that would give you some concrete, more concrete responses to when students, you know, violate the, the, both the tobacco and drug use. So this, this slide here deals with tobacco. So for a first offense is usually a level four, and examples of that could be a detention, in-school suspensions. Any tobacco-related offense has to be reported to law enforcement. So whether it's first offense, second, or third, it's all reported to law enforcement. So on a second offense, here's where we're trying to take a look at some consistency, again, across the district on what that looks like as far as the level of, of the consequence for that in relation to a second offense of tobacco. But we're also trying to provide some alternatives for some of our students and our principals to be able to use a case-by-case basis and recommend to students some programming to, to give to students so that they may be able to understand and educate themselves more, you know, on the effects of tobacco and why they shouldn't be using them. So on a second offense, that would, that would, that's where that would kick in. There would still be consequences. So you can have up to two days ISS, and those, and this is just an example of what a level three consequence might be. But the administrator at that time might have some discretion to offer for that student and the family an opportunity to reduce that if they get educated using some of our programming that we would provide as a district. And then on a third offense, the, again, we're looking at, currently, we do have prevention, but we've visited and got feedback from our, our school districts on the use of prevention. We'll be proposing a different type of solution for that, which would include some extended school day, maybe the, the possibility of having some after-school programming, which might be 90 minutes or so where the student might have to attend five, and then the parent and the student would have to attend one, one session of the, six total sessions. And again, that would be in lieu of possibly a level two offense at that point. So if parents are willing to sign off on that and make sure their kids participate, at the completion of that, that, that level of offense might be reduced. If students wouldn't complete those requirements, then whatever level would be proposed at the beginning would then kick in. Same kind of principles for the drug and alcohol use. So typically our first offense, you know, we've, we've also right now, you know, have the level three offense, which could be up to three days out-of-school suspension if the, if students are in possession. And again, this is different from distribution. This is when students are in possession or use of, of drugs or alcohol. So on the first offense, it would be a level three. But again, that could be, could be a reduction as long as the parent and the student during the hearing would commit to some programming to educate students on the effects of those. Second offense is typically a level two, up to five days out-of-school suspension. All level twos can be a recommendation for this. All level-twos can be a recommendation for the Alternative Placement Center, but again, implementing another completion of that extended school day option. And we like the extended school day option. All of our stakeholder groups are asking us to engage parents more in the discipline process. So if we can get parents to commit to attending with their children, education through an extended-day format, this is what we think is, and many of our stakeholder groups have recommended. And then the third offense, obviously, is a level-two Success Academy reassignment. All of these, again, are required to be reported to law enforcement. And then the last slide just talks a little bit about our timeline. The discipline team came together, really, in late October, and since October, really, until April, we spent a lot of our time working with feedback groups and looking at the Code of Conduct, and, you know, what our feedback groups are telling us, what they like, what they need, what, you know, they feel needs to be changed or tweaked a bit. Today, obviously, we're at our board pre-briefing. We are looking at then getting feedback today, and then providing you with the first draft of what you, after what feedback we get from you for your first reading. Hopefully, on May 21st, then, we can take board action to implement these policies to get ready for all of our Code of Conduct to be presented to our community in July.
Thank you. I will ask the superintendent first if he has any comments.
Madam Chair, I actually would just prefer to hear what feedback comes from the board, and then I'll try to be responsive to that.
Okay. Board members, comments or questions? Ms. Chievenelli?
Thank you for this. I do have a couple of questions, and I just want to also note that I love the fact that the additional, the heightening, the levels for, to support our staff and our teachers. They, many times, we hear they're not being supported, so I think this will counteract that, and hopefully, in the classroom, they'll feel supported. But I wanted, I would be more curious, as well as the students, because the students are going to see that the respect to the parents, I mean, the parents, excuse me, the teachers, the respect there should be at a certain level. And we're not, I mean, we hear lots of complaints from teachers saying they're, you know, the difficulty in the classroom and managing the classroom with the students being disrespectful. So holding some of the parents accountable for their students, I think, is going to be key. I think that it'll, they'll start, the students will get, it'll reflect at home. And so I'm excited to see that information in the data. So I would like to see maybe a survey at the end of the year, after school starts, like, maybe December, a survey for staff as well as students, to see if they feel safer in the classroom, if it's working, if this change really is going to affect the management of the classroom for the teachers and the support, and feel more supported. So that would be one of my things I would like to see. After this presentation, will y'all be presenting to the student advisory? Did they have any input in this? That was one of the other questions that I had. Just curious on that. And that's really all I have. I'm excited to see this implemented and what happens in the classroom after that.
So the student advisory group are done with their meetings right now, but we did engage them a while back to get their feedback. So we presented the changes from last year to this year, and then asked them for feedback. And they did actually give us some really good feedback on numerous items about what should be the level of response. And obviously, you know, that group is very interested in having some more responses that are a little tougher than what we had currently. So that was nice to see from them as well.
Great. I was just curious about that, because they always will have an opinion if you ask them. So, and you said, I was just curious. And then, yeah, I just am excited about this accountability piece. I think it's going to be important for parents to be accountable, and they be a parent. And so if they're going to have to, you know, step up when their children do something wrong, you know, the laws are making it so that parents are being accountable for what kids are doing, their child's doing. So, you know, let's start in the classroom. Thank you.
Board members, anyone else? Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So I have a lot of questions, comments about AI. I'm wondering, first of all, if we shouldn't be treating it as a higher-level offense because it's so difficult to detect? Also, repeated incidents of cheating don't result in a higher level of discipline. It doesn't seem to be, you know, third, fourth, fifth incidents, all treated as if it only happened once. I can tell you that, you know, you guys know I have kids in the schools. Two times, I've been informed that one of my children cheated. The first was by telephone. The teacher called and said, "Your child," I don't want to identify which child it was, "your child looked at his or her notes during a quiz." And so, and the question, it was presented to me as a question, "Is it okay with you if I give your child a zero for the assignment?" And I'm like, whether it's okay with me or not should be completely irrelevant. What is your policy as the teacher? And that was what I said. I said, "Why does it matter if it's okay with me? My child violated a policy in your classroom. You need to do what you need to do as the teacher, and I will support you at home." Now, I know not every parent is going to have that response. A lot of parents are going to say, "My kid would never cheat." I believe teachers more than I believe my own kids, but the, how consistent are we being in terms of how we treat cheating across schools and across classrooms in the same school? If you look at our levels, cheating is treated as severely as a second or third violation of dress code. We are an educational institution, and we are not treating cheating more seriously than we're cheating it. When I first joined this board, this was a problem for me, Kathleen, I don't know if you remember that, but this gets you kicked out of college. This kind of stuff literally gets you kicked out of college, and it's a level-four offense in the school district of Lee County. Those things don't compute for me. And AI just sort of puts this front and center for me, because it is so incredibly difficult to detect. The second time I was contacted about one of my children cheating, it was AI. I don't know how the teacher knew that it was AI, because I don't think you can prove it, but when I read the assignment, I knew it was AI, because I know my kid, and I know my kid can't write like that. So obviously, I supported the teacher, but the consequence was not really all that severe. You know, I had a conversation with the principal and the counselor, and I was like, "What do we do? Oh, my gosh, this is so serious." And they said, "Well, you know, we'll just make sure it doesn't happen again." And I'm like, "But where's the consequence? How does the child, beyond the zero, which the kid didn't care about, kid doesn't care if they get a zero, so how does the zero help to deter it in the future?" I'm really concerned about AI, the potential for cheating, and that my next set of comments has nothing to do with the Code of Conduct. It's more directed toward the superintendent, which is, what are we as a district doing to teach students how to use AI responsibly? What are we doing to teach staff how to use AI to make their lives easier? What are we doing? Are we offering certifications to staff members? Are we offering certifications to students? We talk all the time about accelerated programs for students. Are AI certifications a possibility, something we can offer to our students? The question we need to ask ourselves is, do we want to lead in this area and equip our students for the future through the chair? To the superintendent, you mentioned that earlier. That was one of your comments to one of our community members who gave their report. Or do we want to react? And we can react by putting a clarified definition in our Code of Conduct, or we can lead in this area. And I guess my challenge to you, as I roll off this board in November, is to lead in this area, because this is the future. And if we're not producing graduates who have a very, very, very deep understanding of how to utilize AI as a tool, then we're failing our kids. That's it. It was a great presentation, but I'm really worried about the cheating, and more so with the AI. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I believe it was Mr. Fisher, and then we'll go to Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. So, great presentation. I agree with what everyone said up here. I'm actually going to piggyback on Ms. Patrica, what she said, and I know Ms. Morgan and I especially, I think, since about this last December, have asked for a workshop involving AI. I think, you know, it's a good first step, but I think we need to have some kind of workshop, you know, just, even just from students, from teachers, just to encompass, like you said, we want to make sure we're leading on this, and that's something that's kind of fallen by the wayside, we've all asked for. So if we could have some follow-up on that point, Dr. Savage, at some point. So, like, even the definition, I, you know, it's tough. It's not easy for you. Like, even look at this, you know, I ask myself, "What about artwork? AI-generated artwork? How does that fall?" I mean, I guess, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'd like to have this broader discussion on that. But I appreciate it. I know it's, you know, this is not easy for you, so I appreciate that. As well as, again, I appreciate the consistency in this and moving towards that, but that also comes down to the point that many of us have talked about. How is the application? How is the execution? Because we know from building to building, it's not always the same, and we hear that feedback from teachers and staff. So we have some great tools, and we have some great updates to that, but how is this going to be enforced, and how is it going to be consistent across the board? So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Well, yes, as has been said previously, we have set no expectations for AI. We've only set, you know, we've said no cheating, but we haven't set expectations. And AI is all about deep learning, and deep learning is what we have an obligation to teach our children, and that's where AI comes in. And it seems to me that if you just say, "Using AI is cheating," and you're not looking at how the child is using AI, then you've got a real problem. So that's why I think it's really important that we go there. I do want to compliment you all on the work that you've done, and especially on all of the outreach you've done. I mean, the fact that you've talked to all of these groups, gathered their feedback, they will see in the Code of Conduct that it is responsive to concerns, responsive to suggestions made. I hope will ameliorate some of the concerns about how the Code of Conduct is being implemented across the district by both families and children. So, again, you know, this whole notion that we, as a group, as a team, collaborate before we put some, push something out is terrific. So I want to thank you for that, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I've been to many of these. And I know that the insubordination was, and disrespect was very, very huge with EDAC and the community members that were there, because they were concerned of the language barriers, and what does that mean to our students? Are they understanding what that means? Because when we were out in the community and we were asking kids, what does, you know, this word mean or that word meant, they had no idea what it meant, because it's not in their language. So I know that that was, but I do like the fact that they changed it as deliberate. I mean, I think that's going in the right direction, but I just wanted to shed that light again, because I know you, you've been there and you've heard it all. Also, the report to, I was kind of questioning this, the report to law enforcement for tobacco. So if I'm a student and I am smoking a cigarette, I don't smoke, just FYI, but I'm standing there smoking a cigarette, I am now going to be reported to law enforcement. What does that do, other than now a child's going to have a record? So I'm trying to, how is this helping a student when now we're contacting law enforcement? What happens?
A student could get a citation, and then a student could get a second citation if they have a second vape or a cigarette. And then if they do that within a time period, get a third citation, then they could either lose, if they're not 18, they could either lose their license, or if they are a younger student, they could not get their license when they become 16.
Okay, so that's really something that we definitely need to emphasize, because that, to me, is, could potentially really hurt a child, which is, and even if a parent were to allow their kids to do whatever. I just wanted to say that. And then the report of, oh, the earbuds? So earbuds are permitted? How do you know if earbuds are on or off? Are you looking for lights on the earbuds if they're permitted? And the electronics?
We are not necessarily saying that they are permitted, but we are including them as, if it were a phone. So we are including that in, so it's non-instructional time.
Because there's no way of you knowing if the child is...
Right. So if they're in, if they're in class, those earbuds need to be off...
Okay.
...and away, and in their book bags, just as a phone would be.
Okay. Because it doesn't say that. That's why I was asking that question. So thank you for that. And then my last question is the search and seizure. So the authorities is the principal for that one?
Principal or assistant principal.
Okay, so, thank you. So now we have schools who may not have, and I know, I just found this out the other day, I was not even aware of that, that may not have an assistant principal. So they're one individual. So if that person is not there, who then becomes the authority? Because there is no other person that takes that role over.
It would be their designee.
So before they leave the building, they say, "I'm authorizing you now," because from my understanding, from what I was told, that if they're not there, they have no, there is no other person. So when I just seen that, I was like, "What does that mean?"
There would be an administrative designee on the campus.
That's the way it always is. Through the chair, to the superintendent.
We can try to get you more complete information, but when you're dealing with small enrollment schools that don't have the staffing footprint to generate the FTE for a larger administrative staff, that administrative designee, it's not, that's not a new practice. That's a practice where a person who actually could step in that capacity, and some years actually received a supplement as well, so that they were taking on some additional duties, as a result, we're getting some additional supplemental pay. But in observance of not wanting to speak anything in error of the current environment of how it's being deployed, I would request that you allow us to compile some additional information, make sure it's fully accurate of where our current status is with respect to that designee, and get you a complete answer on that.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that, because when I heard that, I was a little bit concerned that that was even taking place. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica, and then Mr. Persons, then we're going to move on.
Thank you. One question I forgot to ask was, are we tracking incidents of AI cheating separately? Like, can you tell me, Dr. Savage, you know, we had 50 incidents of cheating in our schools last year, 33 of which were AI? I don't think you can, but it's a question to consider. Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, just want to answer a few of the board member questions that have been proposed. Ms. Chievenelli, your question earlier on was collecting perceptual data of, is it working both of our students as well as our staff? That is actually, when you all provide the leadership on the district strategic plan, that is an expectation of having that. I think we're going to continue to look at how we collect that information. We have some new tools, because it's important that it's valid. We know that we get accreditation data that isn't always the most useful to us, doesn't tell us the why. So we have some new tools. Incidentally, they also work with artificial intelligence to theme analyze, things that would take human beings a very long time to do. It does it in a matter of seconds, and so you're able to ask students thousands of questions, staff, thousands of questions, I'm sorry, thousands of them, then get immediate theme understanding, and that is, that's a powerful tool that we're just learning how to utilize. The second piece, because many board members commented on the artificial intelligence, just wanted to reiterate that this obviously is a critical priority for us. So much evidence of that is that this Thursday, we're actually meeting with Miami Dade, because they're considered one of the leaders in this space presently, and so we're going to learn from them as well, and then collaborate. But it's, they're not just talking about utilizing it as an instructional aid and how to do proper ethical use, and how to properly use it, very similar to the ways calculators had to emerge, and to figure out, how do we teach them? How do we utilize these tools, or robotics, or anything else? They're also deploying it organizationally in unique ways. And so as a value add to save time and energy. So we are working on that piece as well, and I look forward to future updates. I did hear very clearly that the board has requested a workshop. I think we would be happy to schedule something, because this is a very important, not just for you all, but for our community and for our students. Thank you. Those are the answers to the questions I have this time.
Mr. Persons?
On the electronic telecommunications devices, you said that, like, the earbuds would have to be off during class time, but the way I read this, it would be all day. It says school hours, so, and phones and everything else need to be off all day. Is that correct, or?
That is a conversation that we are having with principals. And then our Code of Conduct...
Can you turn your...
because of during lunchtime and those, you know, non-instructional time, some principals were, do allow students to use their cellphones during lunchtime and those kinds of activities.
All right. I personally would like to stay the way it's written here, but that's for another discussion, another time. The other one is, what is the consequences for having your cellphone on during class time, or earbuds, or whatever? I mean, it doesn't really say, or maybe I'm missing it here, the levels. Is it a level four, whatever? Or is it just compensation until the end of the day?
Use of your cellphone is a level three infraction, and it can also, if that's the first use of your cellphone, and then repeated is a level three with a SARC review.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I think, Mr. Persons, I agree with you entirely. When I read what's written in the student Code of Conduct versus the response that I received from you, they don't jive. So some principals allow kids to use it during lunch. If the board approves a student Code of Conduct that says it cannot be out and it cannot be used during the school day, that principal cannot allow it to be used during lunch. I don't necessarily think that's the way it should be. You know, I've got three kids in high school, and if they couldn't use them in the lunchroom, I think they'd quit school. So that's fine, let them, but we have to be consistent. We can't have something in the student Code of Conduct that's not being enforced in our schools. Am I right, Mr. Persons? Is that kind of what you were getting at? A little bit, maybe?
Yes, I just
Thank you.
It just seemed a little bit not in sync with what was written here. So
At our May 7 meeting, we will have those answers for you. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. I'll just make mine very brief so that we can move on. I agree, whereas when it comes to electronic devices, it needs to be consistent across the district. While I know some principals allow it, some principals don't. They all have great reasonings why they do and they don't. First of all, it keeps the lunchroom quieter. But on the negative side of that, then there's not communication between students, and they're not talking to their peers and socializing, and we, you know, and that's a concern of mine. But yes, earbuds out of the ears. I've walked through several high schools where the earbuds are in the ears, phones are out. Some of our worst fights that we've seen are because students have a phone and they're recording them. So I don't know, I know that's, like you said, a conversation for another time. But I wanted to go back to slides 10 and 11, and I know that we're really getting short on time here, but this is a huge concern of mine. Can you just very briefly explain to me two things? One, where it says on slide 10, a level four first offense, and then a level three second offense. So what's the difference between a level four and a level three? And then you go to the next slide, and then the first offense is level three,
Right.
then level two. Can you just brief that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So on the, on the slide with tobacco, so we, the code is different. So tobacco use is a specific, specific Cessar code, actually, as well as drug use and alcohol. So those are two separate codes. Typically, our tobacco use has a lower, is a lower level offense than a drug use or alcohol. So that's why you see tobacco listed as the first offense as being a level four, which includes a range of, again, those consequences for that. So our Code of Conduct at each level has some options for some of our administrators to refer to there. They don't always have to be the same. So as you can see on that slide, a level four could include a detention or an in-school suspension or referral to the Handley Foundation. Those are all listed in our Code of Conduct as level four consequences for the first use of tobacco offense. I don't know if that clarifies that for you. So second, as you progress through progressive kind of discipline for the repeated offenses, then typically, then the second offense, if you get, you know, if you've gone through the first offense and you're caught and you get detention, now if you do it again, obviously, that consequence wasn't severe enough to deter that behavior from the student. So typically, at that point, we raise the level of what the consequence is for that offense.
So then my second question is, why is tobacco a less offense than a vape? I mean, they're both illegal substances at
Those are, those are defined by the state
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure
So that's, yeah, that's actually a code that is defined by the state. So the definition of that is defined there. You do have some flexibility in the, in the level of offenses, but typically, that's, that's the way it's treated. And I'm not sure exactly why. I'm assuming, you know, the drug and alcohol use is considered more of a safety issue than tobacco is for our students.
Okay. And I know that unfortunately, there have been incredibly creative ways to get these substances on our campuses in the forms of candy and brownies and all kinds of things. So huge concern of mine. But thank you for the, this is a very heavy lift. Thank you for all the work that you all have done.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Attorney Dupe Bruno, please address public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to staff. Public comment will be held at the podium in the center aisle in front. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. However, at the conclusion of public comment, the chair or superintendent may respond. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers or less. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and we will call you five speakers at a time. Madam Chair, there are two individuals who would like to speak to the board regarding this briefing.
Okay, please continue.
Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Roper, Jamie Merchant.
Good afternoon, Robert Roper. I'd like to address the minutes of the last Curriculum Advisory Committee and apologize for some of the conduct at that meeting. I think it was the perfect storm. I've talked to some other people about it. I don't think it's any one person's fault. But last year, the roles were reversed. I never made an issue of it, and neither did anyone at the district. But I was called a terrorist, an extremist, a Puritan book banner, and the pastor of darkness. One meeting, I was surrounded by a bunch of people that were not sharing my point of view, and one followed me to my car. By far, the most egregious display of aggression that I personally witnessed at this last meeting was from a member of the committee toward a member of the public. The hallmark of the current media process is the default is to protect the child and honor the role of the parent, to advocate for their own child. Contrary to popular accusation, this does not ban, censor, restrict in any way any student's ability to access any material that is approved by the parent. We have not, nor do we desire to challenge any of the classics. And even if we did, the process would protect that book. This current process is very transparent, airs on the side of both the communications with the parent, and it honors the right of each parent to advocate for their own child while not imposing their own ideology on any other parent or child. Can you name the book that has this quote? "I kept begging him to stop, but he just smiled and said he was going to F me up my ass." Anybody name that book? That was a book that got a Stonewall Award. That's an LGBTQ award. Sounds a lot like underage forcible sodomy. Someone would call it rape. Is it fair to say that not all parents would want their children exposed to this kind of material? There are other quotes in that book that are much worse. I challenged that book two years ago. The ad hoc committee determined at that time that it would remain available to all students, ninth grade and up. Not every parent would object to this material, and I understand that, and I advocate for them. But I do think that the current media process protects those parents and children that would not want to have their child have access to that kind of material. There's a meme going around on social media right now. It says, "When you give your child access to the internet, you're not giving your child access to the world. You are in fact giving the world access to your child." I would say it's the same for some of these more objectionable books. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members and superintendent. My name is Jamie Merchant, and I wanted to use my time to also discuss the media access form mentioned in the curriculum advisory report. Lee County is the first county in Florida to implement this permission slip. In just this one school year that has been implemented, five other school districts across Florida are working with their school boards to also adopt this permission slip. In addition, I have networked with school board members and parents in other states like New Mexico, California, Colorado, Arizona, Ohio, and Oklahoma, who have expressed their interest in implementing this same permission slip in their school districts. It's nonpartisan, and it puts parents in the driver's seat when it comes to the content they wish for their minor child to have access to. The concerns brought up about how many families haven't yet filled this out, the answer at this point in the school year should be zero. This form is part of the regular documents needed to be completed in order to have access to your students' focus portal. The other forms this was attached to include emergency contact forms and the medical release form. So if there is any family that hasn't filled out the media access form, they also haven't filled out these emergency forms. It's the responsibility of each school to ensure these documents are completed in a timely fashion. And with a little more than a month left of school, there should be no family in this district that hasn't yet filled out these forms. The default, if this form isn't filled out, is the student still having full access to their media center, with the exception of challenged books. Just this year, there are only three books that have been challenged but still remain after ad hoc committee review. So families that haven't filled out the form potentially don't have access to three books, depending on the age group of their child. Three books. There is nothing wrong with this form, and a majority of the complaints about this form are coming from people who don't even have to fill it out. Lee County set a precedent with this permission slip. How would it look to the other counties and the other states if you just pulled it? Leave the form alone. Parents are the solution, and you should always protect the children first. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Superintendent, would you like to address any of the public comment?
Well, I do want to specifically address, Ms. Merchant brings up a very important point, I think, in terms of the data reporting of completion and whatnot. I just wanted to make sure we're very clear on the record. You know, obviously, data is a very big thing to me, and the data can only be as valid as when you're describing exactly what's being collected. And when a district of our size, you will find people who report our enrollment over 100,000, under 100,000. There's a lot of different things that can occur, and a lot of it comes down to, our charter schools included. Are you including pre-K students? Are you including adult education? Are you including special centers? Are you including schools with media centers? Are you doing that without of the, so for me, I did get some initial reporting, but rather than sharing that, because that was a board member question, and staff went hard to work on it very quickly, I saw it, I had a chance to review it today just to make sure. But I have a follow-up question, just to ensure that it's disaggregated in such a way that we can say transparently, this is what was collected, these are the grade levels, this is corrected. Once we have that additional information, then I look forward to sharing that to answer, because multiple board members had that question. And I just think Ms. Merchant gave the perfect opportunity to explain that to the public as well, so they know it is a, it is a valid question, and there should be all students accounted for, all families accounted for. And if not, then we have to be able to be accountable for why that is not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to move on to good of the order and board member comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Fisher.
I have to go first now. So, thank you. Quick follow-up, just on the committee. I had CSI SPA committee about a week and a half ago, I think. I know Mr. Ribble had pointed it out. They were in for a treat, because instead of liaison, they had the superintendent of the school district there. So it was a little bit of a different opportunity for them. So I know they really enjoyed that, and Dr. Savage did a great job. I promised them I would read their motions into the record. They're a little longer, so forgive me for this. So the two motions were as follows: Recommend to the board that finance should include direct budget funding to establish an integrated information analytics capability with appropriate staffing and technology tools to enable staff to have the ability to improve overall reporting, intelligence, and insights to various internal and external stakeholders. So, mouthful there. The second one is recommend to the board to direct staff to develop a program with specific objectives and timelines to collect, collate, and report information to the public on the district's website on various topics that include, but are not limited to capital plan projects, student behavior, student-teacher ratio, metrics, and district financial reporting, funding spend. So they're really just wanting to look at how we're, how we're reporting stuff, how we're arriving at data and expansion of that, so just, so as well, so we make better informed decisions as well as the public. They pointed out some different school districts that do in, go into some more data. I believe we'd talk, I think Dr. Savage had mentioned some more even interactive in other school districts. So that was kind of some of the basis for this. I can let Dr. Savage, if he wants, later up, later on to fill you on this. I just wanted to say. It was a good meeting. I appreciate that, board. So, and that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli?
I have not, I mean, I said stuff earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. Yeah, so you've got two weeks, or two meetings worth from me today, so I'm sorry. I went to the LCAC Lee County Athletic Conference Hall of Fame induction dinner, which was, as always, absolutely phenomenal. The role that sports and other extracurriculars play in changing the lives of our students was clearly evident that evening. But for me, the real highlight of the evening was seeing Dr. Desmore's daughter, Kiara, inducted into the Hall of Fame. She was one heck of a basketball player in her day. And I mean, really, her induction was what made me say yes to the RSVP, because I've been to that, that event several times. But it was very, very special. And what was super impactful was Principal Burnside's introduction. So it was sort of a family moment come full circle, because Dr. Desmore's father was a member of the last class of Dunbar High School in 1969, when it was closed for desegregation through the Blaylock decision. And then his, the school reopened, and Principal Burnside was named the principal, and then his granddaughter ended up going to that school and winning a state, the very first ever state championship in Lee County for girls' basketball. So it was a wonderful historic moment, I thought, the way that it was presented by Mr. Burnside. So that was an awesome event. Next, I want to talk for the millionth time about flag football. I believe the season is over. If Riverdale is not still alive, I'm not exactly sure where we are in terms of playoffs. Do you know?
They're alive.
They're alive.
They're playing out of town. I forget where it is, but yes.
So is Riverdale the only Lee County school that's still alive?
I believe so.
Okay, so Riverdale is the only Lee County school that's still alive. I will say that I watched just about, when I wasn't here on a Tuesday night for meetings or out of town for funerals, I was watching Bonita Springs High School play various schools across the district. Mr. Maguire, their coach, told the refs the rules. I cannot tell you how many times there was a question about the, and it wasn't like I would do as a coach, where I'd get in the ref's face and be like, you're wrong. He literally was explaining the game to the refs, and they were open to that explanation, because it's a new sport. So I saw Bonita Springs go from, really, they weren't very good, to a very, what I thought was a very good team, until they played Riverdale. And then I was like, whoa, Riverdale is really a good team. Riverdale could go, could go really deep in the playoffs. They were really, really, really good. So that's it. You won't have to hear about flag football from me ever again. Well, I won't say ever. Accreditation. Many of us were on the call for accreditation. The change in culture was highlighted by whoever it was that gave that presentation, and I wanted to highlight that publicly, because I think it's fantastic that we as a leadership team have decided that a change in culture is important, and that clearly was evidenced in the results of the accreditation process. And I believe that Mr. Galbraith was, he spearheaded the project for the district, and he did a phenomenal job. So thank you to Mr. Galbraith for his efforts, and congratulations to all staff on the results of accreditation. Since our last meeting, I have attended an insurance task force meeting, and unfortunately, I don't have a lot of fun data to give you. It was just sort of a And I believe that Mr. Galbraith was, he spearheaded the project for the district, and he did a phenomenal job. So thank you to Mr. Galbraith for his efforts, and congratulations to all staff on the results of accreditation. Since our last meeting, I have attended an insurance task force meeting, and unfortunately, I don't have a lot of fun data to give you, it was just sort of a ho-hum meeting where we had a couple updates. So there's my update for you on ITF. Parent University. I went to Parent University at Pinewoods Elementary School, and there were a total of three parents in the room. The parents were far outnumbered by the number of staff members in the room. I was deeply, deeply, deeply disappointed, but I also get it. I understand why. You know, as I was driving down my street, my neighborhood is right next to Pinewoods, there's a, there's a gate that you can go from my neighborhood into the campus. So I'm driving down my street to get to Pinewoods, and I passed several parents who were in their yards hanging out with their kids. And I was like, "Why aren't they at Parent University?" The reason why they weren't at Parent University is because we didn't give them a reason to go. We didn't give them a hook. There was nothing on that agenda that appealed to the parents at that school. And so I just, I feel like we need to, if we're, if we're going to use staff's time like we did that night, we need to give parents a better reason to show up, and to leave their kids. I mean, I'd rather kick a soccer ball with my kid than go to Parent University with you, because you can only kick a soccer ball with a kid for like 18 years, and then they're gone. So we just, we need to do a better job of figuring out what works in different parts of the district. What works in Lehigh's not gonna work in Estero, what works in Estero's not gonna work in Fort Myers, and I just feel like we need to do a better job. And then finally, what are we doing to track these recommendations by board advisory committees? Please? I know that we used to have a process in place, are we still utilizing that process? And can I be confident that after Mr. Fisher reads recommendations from his committee, that staff is acting on them, and we will be updated as to what next steps are? Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Patrica, because you took half of my stuff away, so I appreciate that. It's been a busy couple weeks. I've been busy traveling around Lee County. I was at the Lee County Middle School and High School Ban, where we had nine middle schools participating, 12 high schools participating. They all come together not knowing each other and perform, and they just did an amazing job. You would think that they have played together all their lives, but that was really great, and they, they appreciated getting the opportunity to, to learn about each other. Also, I did a walk-through to Franklin Park Elementary. It's like coming along, and it's really exciting to see that, when you walk in there, you can visualize the kids on the stairwell, and it just, sidewalks are in there, playgrounds are gonna be coming in, and they're gonna be ready to, you know, start accepting these kids, and it's gonna be amazing. So I'm really thankful for that. I was at East Lee, they did the Top Chef, our culinary students, they shined. They, they received three scholarships, anywhere from $2,500 on down, and they had a box, and it's like, okay, figure out what you're gonna do with cotton candy, pretzels, this, that, you had to add into the ingredients of your box, and they did an amazing job as well. I went by Fort Myers Technical College, I did a walk-through there with, with Joe, and the walk-in is still, I wish we could get our walk-in cooler up for the culinary students. We have a lot of culinary students, and they're gonna have many more coming in, and because of the fire, that's still damaged from that, but they're making do. And I know they're gonna do a grand opening, so they're really excited about us all being there and seeing what has transpired. And he had shared also that the new program, the RN program, 900 hours, that Lee County is looking at doing that, and we would be the first in the state to offer that, which is really nice, instead of bridging into a college. So that's a great opportunity for us. And what's he's, what he's envisioning for that area, it's, it's very, it's gonna be great for us. We did Healthy Eat Live-In Collaborative at Island Coast, looked at the gardens, the culinary program over there, took the fish because they have the aquaponics, they cleaned them, cooked them, made tacos out of them. I know you like that, Ms. Chievenelli. And that was, again, we had a lot of people throughout the community that were there to share what is happening, and all the vegetables and everything that they are sharing with our students in our schools. So that was amazing. Golden Apple was already mentioned, The Lion King, of course, is always phenomenal. Janelle does a phenomenal job over there at North Fort Myers High School. And then this morning, I was at the Career Advisory Meeting, which was at Island Coast, and I didn't realize this until today, that we have the only astronaut training in the state of Florida, and they, you know, all the simulators there, which they were trying to get me to fly, which I would not be able to be sitting here if I had. And that was, a lot of the community members came and participated in that, and looking at all the academies that we have there at that school as well. So they're really trying to, to pump it up at Island Coast to, to fight for the students. You know, they know that we need to, to keep going. And then, of course, Take Stock Today, and that's it. And now we're here. And there's also a $2,500 scholarship that they're, an organization is trying to give out for our CTE programs for the kids, and they really want to give this money away. So I have a flyer, they're disseminating it to all the schools, and they don't want to keep their money, they want to give it. So whoever's out there listening that's, are in these programs, that seniors that are part of the CTE programs, ask your school counselors and apply for this scholarship because they want the money to go away, so they can get more money for next year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Persons.
I gave my update on the advanced finance forum earlier, but, Ms. Patrica, they're in the semifinals, the Lady Raiders, and they're playing in St. Pete tonight at 7:00. Can I be excu... No. I wish them the most luck, but they have a lot of skill also, so...
They are really good.
That's all.
Ms. Morgan.
Oh dear. I have several things. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Patrica, for mentioning the accreditation process. That was quite, quite a statement she made about us, so that's great. Just some shout-outs to school counseling and mental health services, because some of the district high schools are holding FAFSA Fridays. One time, it's an opportunity for parents and students to meet with their schools, college, and career specialists, and get one-on-one help completing the FAFSA, which, as everybody knows, this year is an extraordinarily difficult process. So thank you to them for doing that. To Psychological Services, which continues to do their evaluation clinics on Saturdays to address the ongoing demand for comprehensive psychoeducational evaluations. That's asking a lot of staff, but they're doing it, and I just wanted to shout out to them. A shout-out to HR. The total number of employees funded through ESAR was 258. We keep asking, what's happening with those employees? 150 have been retained at their location. I mean, that's huge. So there's another 92 or so to go, but we've got, we've got some time. So a lot of effort there, and that, that's, I know that was a tough carry, or it continues to be a tough carry. I went to the JA Inspire Career Expo, and I just want to show you this. I know you can't see it, but this is, this is put out by Skanska, which is a construction firm, and it talks about career paths in construction, and it has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, about 20 roles ranging from project management down to supplier, down to legal. It has job descriptions for each of those areas. It has preferred education for each of those areas, and it has career path for each of those areas. The whole point is that you don't stop by Skanska just to talk about construction. You stop by Skanska to talk about if you're into doing digital arts, or whatever it's called. There may very well be a job there for you. And I think, actually, I was showing this to someone at a different booth, and he was gonna run over and get it for his kid who's in high school, because she didn't want to come, because she didn't see any job, job, she didn't see any industries or companies there that were specifically geared to her interests. And he said, "But, but your interest is covered in, in these other industries, and so you have to look at that." So just a shout-out to them. Because we're running short on time, I do want to bring up again, surveying, or figure out a way to survey committee members. There has been dissatisfaction with finance advisory for several years now, and the fact that people are not participating is not good. And so we really do need to figure out what it is that we're, we're doing that is failing to attract and engage community members. And I want to bring up again, for board discussion, along some of these other recommendations, this business of a facilities committee. I don't know that we need another committee, but I do understand the frustration of people in the community who say, "I don't hear about something coming to my area until it's, it's in the budget for the first step. I would like to know what's going on." So I throw that out. And Sam, that's sort of a law, oh, your comment, which I did not, I have to say, I did not understand at all that first comment you read, but I got a little piece out of it, which had to do with finance. And I do believe, and I've had these conversations with Dr. Bernier in the past, we need to do a much better job with our finance reporting on the website. I've, I've, I know we need to work with communications to do that, but, but there, there needs to be some work done there. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Madam Chair, I, I shared my comments, but I just want to make sure I answered the board member questions that were directed for this, and so just very quickly, for Ms. Patrica, the question about staff acting upon the board member advisory, we will reconvene with our team that is across that and ensure we have proper action answers to that question. Thank you for, for raising it. As for the ESAR employees, the tracking piece, Ms. Morgan will continue to provide that update in, in the Board Weekly, or any other method we have that the Board would like, just to track how we are closing down on retaining employees wherever possible. Also, as far as the survey committee members who are, who are failing to attract or engage, that's definitely something I'll bring to that same committee when we reconvene about the board advisory, plus the, just the facilities committee. I understand when we have a construction committee, it's really important that folks understand, prior to it ever getting to construction, it starts with planning, and part of planning is how we engage. And so I really appreciate the push for us. I think maybe that's something we think about, is perhaps if we were to rename our committee a facilities committee, that represents a totality of the front end of sharing the growth data, showing all the things that go into that process, which occurs in some cases years before it even gets into the budget, but it helps to, I think we learn, we constantly want to improve our process and engagement, and, and that doesn't mean everyone will be happy either way, it just means at least it's transparent, there's opportunities for engagement, opportunities to share data, and you can have a balanced, rich discussion in those settings far before it ever gets to shovel in the ground, or even design drawings. And so we just really appreciate that. I just want to level-set with the Board that that is a sentiment that, because I did hear it from one member, but if that's something you want us to continue to look at, I'll certainly mention, raise the issue with them, if that has the Board's support behind it. Okay? I'm seeing nods, so I'll take that as a...
A lot of nods.
Well, it doesn't mean we'll move forward, but we'll bring you additional information on, on what we recommend for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize. Attorney DuPuy Bruno, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We will have a student performance tonight at 5:45, followed by a board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 4:30 PM.